Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the City of Muskegon City Commission Meeting for August 11, 2015. Is Pastor Johnny Brown in the house this evening? Well, before we begin the proceedings, we typically open with a brief prayer followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. So if you could all stand, offer a brief prayer, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Heavenly Father, thank you for bringing us to this evening hour safely through the day. May we also make it home safely after our deliberations, after our working things out, hopefully all for the betterment of the people of the city of Muskegon. May we safely enjoy the remainder of our summer and move into the harvest season. And may the work we do here provide a bountiful, bountiful harvest of goodness and greatness for our town. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
May we have the roll call, please?
Commissioner Johnson?
Here.
Mayor Galvin?
Here.
Commissioner Hood?
Here.
Vice Mayor Spataro?
Here.
Commissioner German? Absent. Commissioner Rinse Masidia? Absent. Commissioner Turnquist?
Here. Thank you. May we have the consent agenda, please?
Approval of minutes, City Clerk. Summary request: To approve the minutes of the July 28, 2015 City Commission meeting. Staff recommendation: Approval of the minutes. Legal Services, City Manager. Summary request: The City Commission requested staff to negotiate a five-year agreement for legal services with Par Menro Tool to provide both general legal and prosecution services. Staff is asking the Commission to approve the five-year agreement. Staff recommendation: To approve the legal services agreement with Par Menro Tool and authorize the City Clerk and Mayor to sign. Section 10-351-F3 Registration of Rental Dwellings Ordinance Amendment, Public Safety. Summary request: The Director of Public Safety requests that the City Commission review and authorize the proposed amendment to Chapter 10, Buildings, Article 6, Division 2, Subdivision 3, Rental Property of the city of Muskegon. This ordinance amendment focuses on subsection F3, which would allow an alternative escrow option in lieu of dwelling fire insurance. The subsection and associated bullet points 1 through 7 explain the escrow option for landlords who cannot obtain insurance or opt not to acquire dwelling insurance to repair or demolish a property after a catastrophic fire event. Staff recommendation: Staff recommends approving this ordinance amendment as written. Bike time: Recent request for a five-year commitment for bike time 2015 to 2019, planning and economic development. Summary request: To terminate and rescind the request for a five-year commitment for bike time 2015 through 2019 granted by the City Commission on October 14, 2014. Staff recommendation: It is recommended that the October 14, 2014 City Commission's motion granting a five-year commitment for bike time 2015 through 2019 be rescinded. Rebel Road: Request for a five-year commitment for Rebel Road 2016 through 2020, planning and economic development. Summary request: Rebel Road has requested a five-year commitment from the city to host Rebel Road downtown. There are no major changes from the way Rebel Road was run in 2015, and the streets affected are the same as past years. This year, 2015, was the first year that Rebel Road replaced bike time and was organized by the Child Abuse Council in coordination with a number of downtown business owners. They're asking for the five-year agreement to make planning the event easier. Knowing their plans well in advance should also help city staff with their planning. Items requiring City Commission approval are the same as in previous years: that the city waive DPW equipment rental costs, that Rebel Road be able to use their own labor pool when possible rather than using city staff, and some deviation from street closure times listed in the city's special event policy. Staff recommendation: It is recommended that staff be allowed to make the final decision regarding actual street closures, rental fees, and costs to be coordinated through the city manager. In addition, staff recommends that if Rebel Road picks up items such as picnic tables, bleachers, and trash cans for distribution at the proper locations, there will be no equipment rental charge to Rebel Road. This must first be approved by and coordinated through city staff. It is also recommended that city staff review staffing levels for city personnel with the Rebel Road staff, with the city making the final decision on the number of city staff needed for the event. Regarding street closures, staff recommends approval with the condition that Rebel Road notify affected downtown businesses of the dates and times of street closures and the date and time that no parking restrictions go into effect on those streets. Sale of property at 1690 Creston Street, planning and economic development. Item has been removed per staff request. Sale of property at 881 Pine Street, planning and economic development. Summary request: Staff is seeking approval to sell the buildable commercial zone lot at 881 Pine Street to the adjacent business BK Muskegon Properties LLC at 928 Terrace Street. They will be remodeling the store and will use the new lot to add an additional drive-through lane. The lot measures roughly 8,700 square feet, and the applicant has offered $40,000 for the parcel. Staff recommendation: Approval and signature of the purchase agreement and resolution. Amendment to the Janitorial Services Contract 2014-2017, Engineering. Summary request: Amend the current janitorial services contract with Reliant Professional Cleaning Services to include the cleaning of the filtration plant facilities at an additional cost of $1,189 per month starting September 2015 through April 2017. Staff recommendation: Amend the current contract to include the cleaning of the filtration plant facilities as outlined for a monthly cost of $1,189. Approval of a Neighborhood Enterprise Zone Certificate, planning and economic development. Summary request: An application for a Neighborhood Enterprise Zone certificate has been received from Bruce Lindstrom for the new construction of a home at 331 Terrace Point Circle. The property is located in the Neighborhood Enterprise Zone for new construction. The application states that the estimated cost for construction will be $382,446 in materials. The applicant has met local and state requirements for the issuance of an NEZ certificate. Approval or denial by the City Commission is required within 60 days of the application date and must be forwarded to the State Tax Commission. Staff recommendation: Approval of the NEZ certificate.
Thank you. Commissioners, you've heard the consent agenda as presented. Are there any items you wish to have removed for further discussion? Vice Mayor?
Item C, Charlie.
Thank you. Any others, gentlemen?
Item H.
Item H. Okay. I'll entertain a motion, please. Vice Mayor?
I would move that we approve the consent agenda as presented with the items of exception, I'm sorry, of items C, Charlie, and H, Hill.
Thank you. It has been -- oh, I need a second.
Second.
Second. Been moved by the Vice Mayor, seconded by Commissioner Johnson to accept the consent agenda as presented minus item C and item H. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mayor Galvin?
Yes.
Commissioner Hood?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Spataro?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Item C, Vice Mayor?
Yes, I would move that we -- let me make sure I get the right wording here. I would move that we adopt the registration of running Rental Dwellings Ordinance Amendment to Section 10-351, Paren 5, Paren 3 of the Book of Ordinances.
Support. Been moved by the Vice Mayor, seconded by Commissioner Turnquist to approve the amendment to Section 10-351-F3 Registration of Rental Dwelling Ordinance Amendment. I ask the Vice Mayor to hold this. We do have an individual that would like to take three minutes to address the issue. Mr. Watley?
Watley.
Watley, yeah, Watley, right. Also be apprised, we will need a second reading on this due to the fact that we do not have our full commission.
Good evening. Yes, David Watley, 3133 Country Club Drive, Muskegon, Michigan. You know, I understand the previously passed ordinance in dealing with the fire code situation. And I understand your objective in doing that, that people are walking away, leaving properties behind, leaving you stuck. It created quite a problem for a number of us. And I approached Jeff Lewis, Mr. Briggs, and Frank Peterson with this potential option here. And I must congratulate Mr. Peterson and hopefully the council here in showing a forward thinking that I have not previously seen a whole lot of from Muskegon in trying to work with the taxpayers here in Muskegon to come to a resolution of an issue. You know, your ordinance was a one-size-fits-all. And if any of you have bought anything a one-size-fits-all at a grocery store or Walmart or anywhere, you know it doesn't. And so here is a viable option that if you want the $10,000 to be able to cover a property, this will do it, okay? It meets everybody, everybody is happy, you know, we're, here you go. It's a handshake, we've met in between, we've given, we've met this obligation, and you're happy, we're happy. I think it's a, I think it's a good alternative, a good option here. I see that there are a number of bullet points, and I don't know all of the details of this. And so I can't speak further in the details. And so, you know, at one point, there was talk of a tiered response, and, you know, based upon the number of houses. Is that still currently in the bullet points? Does anyone know?
Correct. There's one tier, essentially 10, if I remember right, 10 to 9, 10 to 20, and then above 20.
And above 20 is what? Then there's an additional?
Six additional $5,000. Correct.
There's an additional deposit required at that time?
Correct.
Yes.
Okay. And that's one of the things when we were negotiating this, that I just couldn't wrap my head around. And, you know, your, your, the intent of your ordinance was to have $10,000 insurance or now cash to cover an occurrence. And so whether you have one home or 100 homes, if you have $10,000 to cover an occurrence, that seems like that would, that should be it, you know? If, if I do have an occurrence and you use my $10,000, the next day you pick up the phone, "Mr. Watley, you're no longer in compliance with the ordinance, you need to come bring another $10,000 down." I'm just not able, like I said, to wrap my head around the tiered responses. Mr. Johnson, can you explain that to me? Why there, why there is this difference like that?
Direct questions, not just...
Okay.
I'd be happy to respond.
Well, we can't.
We speak as a body.
I'm sorry?
I said, "We speak as a body," so we can ask the manager to answer that question for you if you were looking for a reasoning behind that particular part of the ordinance.
Is that, is that, Mr. Mayor, is that what he says?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, so the rationale behind having, I guess, a larger amount for more properties were the potential that there could be multiple fires maybe before the property was, was fixed, right? And so just understanding that, that obviously if you have more than one fire at one time, you know, we would need to have more, I guess, more funds available. But the reality, the reality was, we were trying to accommodate the people that had 10 to 20, but at the same time, we wanted to make sure that there were more dollars if somebody had 50 or 60 or 100, that $10,000 still wouldn't cover if there was a catastrophic thing that maybe hit two houses or three houses at one time. So, so we thought it was fair. If people don't like the, the, I guess, the tiered system, they're, they're more than, you know, able to, I guess, go out and get the fire insurance. This was just a way to give somebody a second option.
Miss O'Leary's cow option.
But that's where it stands.
All right. Very good, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Watley. Anything further, gentlemen?
Yep. I was going to question the same one. We had talked, or I talked to Chris over at the attorney's office, and asked her a question about a tier from 5 to 10. We discussed that a little bit in our work session, and we apparently decided to stay from 10 to 20, and 20 and above.
Yes. Correct. And when, and when we talked yesterday, everyone, your concern was specifically about Mr. Watley and the fact that he might have had less than 10. I did call him today and just verify. I think we, you have 12, I want to say, I think he's got 12 in the city now. And I guess there could be a potential where he divested in some of those, and it could become an issue. And if that does become an issue, maybe we can talk about how we mitigate that going forward. But the goal from our standpoint was not to have everybody who wanted to avoid fire insurance with one dwelling or two dwellings or three dwellings to be able to do this, because we just didn't want to be in the, in the market of holding escrows for, you know, for too many folks. We just don't have the resources, nor the time, nor the expertise to do it. But we're willing to do it in certain special circumstances like Mr. Watley's and people who have multiple units.
All right.
I think this will limit our, limit the need for us to get involved.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hood?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Spataro?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Galvin?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Item H, Commissioner Turnquist?
I would move that we accept the amendment to the Janitorial Services Contract 2014-17 from the Engineering Department.
Support. Been moved by Commissioner Turnquist, supported by Commissioner Johnson, to accept and amend the current contract for janitorial services for 2014, 2017 at the filtration plant. Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes, again, we had a little bit of discussion last night at the work session, and I had asked the question, "How are we doing the janitorial services prior to this contract?" They said you'd be here.
Good evening to all.
Good evening, Mr. Alshotel.
We used to do it in-house, then we shifted, I think, 2012, 13, 14. We went into the janitorial services that we, that did City Hall and the Public Service Building, and then we had staffing availability, so we ended up shifting to in-house. The staff, the staff were doing it at the filtration plant. But this year, we ran into quite a bit of, you know, unfortunate exodus, if you will, of staffing and injuries, so we needed, we need that service to keep up with it. And now with the additional customers that we have, we need to do a better job than what we have done. So we will be, we were asking permission to extend the contract that we have with the Reliant Services for City Hall and Public Service Building to start doing the janitorial services on a three, I believe it's a three-day proposal, not every day, but they will come every other day to the filtration plant.
Reliant already does our, our cleaning, and it's just going to be an expansion of their responsibility.
They already do, they were selected via competitive bids, so you, about two years ago, we solicited the bids in 2014. They're doing City Hall, and they're doing the Public Service Building.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else? Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Spataro?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Galvin?
Yes.
Commissioner Hood?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. New business, please.
Designation of voting delegates for the Michigan Municipal League Annual Business Meeting, City Clerk. Summary request: To designate by action of the Commission one of our officials who will be in attendance at the convention as an official representative to cast the vote of the municipality at the annual meeting, and if possible, to designate one other official as, to serve as alternate. Staff recommendation: Approval.
Thank you.
I would make a motion that we approve the request of voting delegates of the Michigan Municipal League, and I believe it's to add, designate one other official to serve as an alternate.
Second. Alls we got to do is put some names in there. Do you have any recommendations?
Well, well, I have two different ways to go. One, if there are any commissioners that are planning on going or want to go, then probably we should make that, that, or one of those commissioners, the voting delegate. If not, myself, Mohammed, and Ann are planning on going, so probably you could make me the delegate and Mohammed the alternate. But again, if there are commissioners that plan to go or desire to go, then it could easily be one of you guys as well.
Okay. I do want to try to get there, but who knows at this juncture? Everybody else is kind of up in the air, too?
I will be unable to attend. I have a work conference in Kalamazoo those same three days, so...
Right. So, so that sounds like a winner. We'll designate, it's been moved by, right, Commissioner Turnquist and seconded by, did we get a second on it?
Commissioner Hood.
Yeah. Commissioner Hood to appoint the voting delegates for the Michigan Municipal League Annual Business Meeting, being Frank Peterson as principal, right, and Mohammed Alshotel as secondary. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yep.
Mayor Galvin?
Yep.
Commissioner Hood?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Spataro?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Is there any other business commissioners? Vice Mayor?
Just one item. We have lots of good people who work for the city and provide services to our citizens. And, you know, some people go a little above and beyond, and so I'd just like to say a thank you to Assistant Chief Chuddy on his years of service to the citizens of this community, and I wish him well in his retirement.
You're good. You're here? Thank you. I'd also like to congratulate the great efforts of our neighborhood associations and staff for another successful national night out. I only made it to about half of them this year. I need new shoes. But thank you for everybody stepping up and getting involved and doing everything we can do to continue to make this a great city. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to address the commission? Sir?
Thanks for listening, for to me. My name's Craig Crichet.
I just need your address, too.
My address, 3050 McDermott Street. I, I'm a landlord of 41 houses here in the city of Muskegon. I'm also, Dave called me regarding this issue you guys had here today. The tier effect, once again, my dad's been doing this for 20 years. He's had several fires. He's had probably five in 20 years, okay? None of them were catastrophic, luckily, but I just still don't, can't swallow the, the, we're talking a half percent, a 1% chance of these multiple fires happening in the same time of using that $10,000 for the catastrophic, you know, house loss for the removal of the, of the structure. I personally haven't had any yet. I've been running it for five years now. My dad never had a catastrophic one. We're all within a mile of the firehouse here. Any fires were minimum $10,000. We fixed them ourselves, basically. And I just, once again, I just feel stuck because I'm going to have to, not only did you, the $10,000 fire insurance that we had to have, I called around for two months trying to find an insurance carrier to carry the minimum $10,000 fire insurance. Nobody around will carry, will cover you for $10,000 minimum. $40,000 is about the minimum you can find in any of these structures, you know, and they go on a square foot basis of the house. So that was tough enough. The $10,000, I see you trying to make it lenient on us, but at the same time, it's impossible, or I can't say impossible, I could not find any person, any insurance company to cover just for the 10 grand. I did, however, finally go with Wilkinson down the road, and like I said, $40,000 and $50,000 depending on the square foot of the house. At 41 houses, this has cost to me $17,000 a year for this insurance on a 1% chance, you know, basically, I'm going to have a catastrophic fire. I'm glad that you're working with me on the $10,000 or the 15 as it's structured now, because that's better than multiple years. I'd rather have, you know, and I mentioned this to the inspectors when they first brought it to me, and they wanted to give me my certificate of compliance because of no proof of insurance. I just, once again, would, you know, propose to the board that, you know, we're talking about a minute chance of having multiple fires before, you know, you use up that $10,000 bond. Most times, if we do have a fire, we're going to be able to fix it ourselves and not even have to touch that $10,000 bond. I just would like to, you know, I just don't think it's fair because this guy's got 19 houses, he only has to put 10 grand. This guy's got 21, you need 15 grand. Where do you really draw the line? Where is it really fair? You know, I've got 41, so I'm sitting with, at the mercy of the council here, so I'm just pleading with the council to make it, you know, the $10,000 is to cover the, you know, destruction, you know, the tear down of a house if, if you have catastrophic fire. Once again, we're talking about a minute chance of you ever having two. We've had five in 20 years, you know, let alone two in one year. It's never happened. So I just propose that, you know, if, I think would be fair across the board, the $10,000 you guys are holding for, you know, in a bond, would be sufficient, whether, no matter how many houses you have. So I appreciate you hearing me and possibly, you know, maybe that come into discussions later, but I appreciate y'all hearing me.
Absolutely. Thank you. Are there any other members of the audience? Sir, please.
I apologize, I missed some of the other comments related to what I'd like to say. Rick Toll, 3215 Memorial, my business address, 8 West Walton. And I am intimately close to a lot of the concerns. I assist, represent many mom-and-pop scattered site property owners through the association. We have an active association, maybe somebody mentioned that. And we're all very concerned about costs. We're on the edge, a lot of my friends and clients here are on the edge with financing and with other expenses as they increase over time. And I, too, with Craig and Dave maybe said, it's, no carriers are, are doing the demolition only. Link, Farmers, Farm Bureau, we can't find anybody. So the bond, and I guess, is it down to the tier issue? I'm not sure. Only, but if it is, I can see how, you know, if there's another way for that to fly with a diligent, I mean, if the bond is shaded or used, that's the city's concern, whether they're left, or if there's more than one in that unique kind of freak situation where more than one would go, how does, how does the city deal with that? So I'm a small, five-property in the city, but, so I, I may not be impacted on a low tier, but a lot of my friends here would be. So I appreciate the city trying to help the small business, because we're, we're stakeholders in our small cities, core city, where the, the problems are more likely to occur, maybe. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? If not, Commissioner Hood?
There's nothing else, I move to the...
Support. It's been moved by Commissioner, supported by Commissioner Johnson to adjourn. All in favor? Any in opposition? Then let's go have dinner. Thank you.
I'll have to spare a guest. You guys spare a guest?